Good evening and welcome to the June 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are watching from home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand, and Ms. Barton will lead us in the pledge, followed then by our moment's silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment's silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, communications?
Good evening, board. We want to begin with Mitchell Nielsen thanking Parks Realty. Every year, Parks Realty holds an essay contest for the school, and they award first, second, third, and fourth places. Fourth, third, second receive gift cards, and the first place winner receives a bicycle and helmet. Parks Realty is just a great partner for Mitchell Nielsen, so once again, I would say thank you to them. Also, congratulations to Sarah Chumney. Sarah is a teacher at Kaysant Lane Academy last year, and is actually moving to Salem this year. Sarah's been selected as a Teacher of the Year state finalist for the Mid Cumberland Region, so this will put her as one of nine finalists, which is a really, really nice award in itself, but she will now compete as a state finalist for Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to Sarah. She is definitely deserving. Also, congratulations to Gary Anderson. Gary's been selected by the Lieutenant Governor to be a member of the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative Council as a representative for our local school system.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, so congratulations, Gary.
Thank you.
Before I turn it over to Ms. Cosby, we want to remind parents that if you have a child that is going to kindergarten this year, they need to be five years old before August 15th, and we would like to get in touch with them. So if you've already signed up for kindergarten, that's great, but if you know you're coming and maybe you haven't done the preregistration, we would love for you to sign up for our newsletter, which is a kindergarten, ready for kindergarten newsletter. And all they have to do is go to our website and click on newsletter and put in the subject line kindergarten. And we are doing 10-week countdown to kindergarten, and we're only six weeks away, so we're on week five this time. Anyway, so if you have a kindergarten, we want to hear from you. And I want to go ahead and turn the podium over to Ms. Tamara Cosby and Ms. Shiloh Siegel from the Youth Leadership Academy and let them tell you what they've been up to for the last couple of weeks.
Tamara is going to start a slideshow that'll let you see some of the places that we took the children, but this is our fourth year, the fourth summer that we've had the Youth Leadership Academy. And the academy is made up of roughly three to four students from each city schools, and each student is nominated by their teacher to attend. And the academy has two goals. The first goal is to enhance the leadership skills that the students already have, and then the second one is to expose them to different career fields so that they can start imagining their futures.
So some of the places that we went to, this was my favorite picture of the entire week, we went to Murfreesboro Electric Company, we have been to the fire department, we went to the wastewater treatment plant, we went to local restaurants in Murfreesboro, and the reason that we went to local restaurants in Murfreesboro is because that is another way that we want to show them leadership. And all of the local restauranteers, the owners, will come out and speak to the children. Each of the kids are given an opportunity, this is the only non-local, MSC suites, but they treat them like queens and kings there, it's amazing. But each of the places that they go, they ask questions to develop their leadership skills. They have chosen a skill that they want to improve on, and one of eight skills. And our overarching theme this year seemed to be flexibility, and that's what most of the students took away from what they wanted to learn more about. We got to choose, excuse me, tour the judicial system, judicial office, and we did not even get to see half of it, from what we understand, and we were there for two and a half hours. It was pretty remarkable. But all of the different people will take the time out of their day. The police, the assistant police chief came out and spoke to the kids, and the fire chief not only saw them at the police station, but also came out and talked to them at the fire station as well. We also got the opportunity to pack bags for the children that are not able to get to the child bus, and they were able to do that at the warehouse in our, the district central office. It's remarkable to watch these kids. We see them learn how to speak in ways that they wouldn't necessarily get an opportunity to try to do. When they present their learning to their parents at the end of the week, they are, it makes me cry every year. It's amazing what they come away with. So this is just a taste of, oh, this was probably one of our favorites too. This was Lifeflight Murfreesboro. We did not know that that even existed until we happened upon them last year. So that's all we've got. You have any questions?
Sounds like a great time for all these young people to do, and to go places, and like you said, to see different occupations and things they might be interested in. Thank you very much for your leadership and for what you do.
Thank you very much. We're going to turn it over to Dr. Christy Mall from Discovery School.
So we have some very exciting news to share with all of you. I'm Dr. Mall from Discovery School, and this is Jason Page, and as you probably recall, we met with you in the fall, and our kids have done spectacularly well at the state Beta Club convention. So we were just able to go and compete in the national Beta Club convention, and that was in Oklahoma City. So we had 17 children travel to Oklahoma along with their families and compete, and they did a tremendous job. So we have part of them here to kind of show their trophies and brag about them, and others are at camp, so we were able to get a few here. But one of the things that we are incredibly proud of is not only did we place in the top eight in the nation in every event that we entered, except two, and that's it, which is phenomenal. We also won the most awards of any elementary school in the country, and we competed against 27 states. So we're going to show you just a picture. Our Beta Club team won first place in the nation. Amazing, and we were the only competitor. I put the bracket up, and I was sending emails, I was so excited, to let everybody know as we were competing. We were the only school from Tennessee that made it to the top eight. They do that through an academic test. And then we competed, and we were able to win through a elimination tournament process, just like you would use for basketball. And so our team is here, so I would like to introduce to you Jack Gray, who is our captain. Grayson Lynn is unable to be here today. Alicia Moreno, and John Thomas Parkinson. So these are three of our four competitors, and I also want to brag about them. Not only did they win, but they won by a large margin on three out of four of the events that they competed in, but they also were good sports, they shook hands at the end of their competition, and were very gracious to everyone, including the judges and the adults, and we made sure that they were very respectful to everyone, and you honestly couldn't ask for a better group of kids to represent Murfreesboro. So that was the first time that we have been able to win first place in Quiz Bowl, so they're the first to do that, and again, this is only our third year. To give you an idea, we had 20,000 students that were competing in Oklahoma City during our event, 20,000, and these had to qualify at the state level in order to participate. Out of those 20,000 students that were competing, we took 17 kids, one had to cancel with strep, he was devastated. But we competed at the Oklahoma City Convention Center and their arena, and filled the arena, and we had the most elementary wins of any elementary school in the country. So that was amazing in itself. So it wasn't just our Quiz Bowl, our engineering team, Keegan Sparks, and Keegan was one of our engineering team members last time, and I had such a long list of names, I inadvertently left his name off. So shout out to Keegan for being great and being a good sport about that, and I put him first to make sure I did not overlook a name. So Keegan Sparks, Bryce Holman, Luca Guvar, Andrew Smith, and Matthew Smith were on the engineering team. Now let me give you an idea. We talked about in the past how the Rutherford County engineer, Mike Hughes, has been coaching our team, and we qualified in the sixth grade division as well as in the fourth and fifth. But because of the schedule, we were unable to have enough kids on the team to go to the sixth grade division, which is what his daughter's on. He still came back and coached our team all the way up until the championship, and then he was upset that he couldn't come to Oklahoma City because he had a conflict with his daughter's recital, and so he went, of course, we encouraged him, "Go with your daughter, that's fine." But we still won seventh in the nation, and in order to win that, we are given a box, and you are only allowed to pack certain items. You have 45 minutes to build a roller coaster that will support a golf ball, a tennis ball, and a baseball.
Baseball.
Yes. And they had 45 minutes to construct it, and if you can imagine, the room that they competed in was the size of this building. We were not allowed to stop, we had to walk in circles around them, so there were approximately 65, 70 teams that were competing, and our engineering team won seventh in the nation. And we wanted to say thank you, Mr. Hughes, and thank you, Kelly Holman, and all of the parents involved with the engineering team, they were very hands-on and were able to do a lot for them. But that's not all. We also competed in academics. So in sixth grade, we only had one student that was able to attend. Griffin Minner won seventh place in sixth grade science in the nation, which is amazing. Rachel Swickard in fifth grade placed first place in science competition, and I have to add that last year she won first place in math in fourth grade. And so I also had another student that was really strong in math, and so I asked the two of them, "Would one of you be willing to compete in science and one of you in math?" And she said, "Oh, I'll try science." That's great. She won first place in the nation in both, so she won two consecutive first places. I told Lisa and Dr. Gilbert, "Be happy when she wins her Nobel Prize, she's going to give a shout out to Murfreesboro City School." You've already set that up. So she was able to win first place in fifth grade science. Grayson Lynn won second place in fifth grade math. Ellie Gardner won fifth place in fifth grade social studies.
Wow.
Hold up your trophy. Yeah. And Allison Lewis won eighth place in fifth grade poetry.
Oh, my goodness.
And she was the first to ever make it to Nationals in poetry, so. And then in fourth grade, Eli Bauer placed second place in fourth grade math. Truett Serbaugh placed second place in social studies in the nation. And we could not be more proud. And then Parker Lindquist and Parker Griffin also competed, one was the one that got sick with strep. So overall, just to give you an idea, they competed against 20,000 children, and we scored 16 awards. We counted this beforehand, I'm nervous. We won 16 of the awards at the Nationals and placed in the top eight in every single event that we entered, except for banner and t-shirt. And honestly, Allison was phenomenal because she not only competed in poetry, she also competed in banner and t-shirt for us as well, and was having to be interviewed about both at the same time so that she could make her poetry event, so we're totally like no harm, no foul on the t-shirt and banner. Amazing that she did that and transported it all the way to Oklahoma. So we cannot thank you enough for all of your support, and can't thank the parents and all of the supporters, Ms. Maddox and everyone involved for all that they've done, and Mr. Page, who's invaluable. So we are planning on expanding our coaching team next year because obviously we are growing and we need more help. So next year, we plan on bringing more awards and more coaches with us. And just wanted to show you a quick picture, because I'm not sure that this was going through. This is our engineering team, that's what they were able to build in 45 minutes.
Wow.
And just to give you an idea of how large the event was, that was a picture during one of the award events. And then we also have all of our award members that placed, which was amazing, and also very proud of Allison and Griffin, Grayson and Ellie for all that they've done. This was a huge deal, and we literally filled Oklahoma City's convention center and arena with children, and we did this well, so we couldn't be more proud. So thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Griffin placed seventh nationally in sixth grade science.
Yes.
Now what did Griffin have to do to place? I mean, were there question and answers?
Written test.
A written test?
He had to take a written test. In order for the academics to win their awards, they're all given the same test, they're put in a room with approximately 45 to 50 kids or more that are competing in the same event, and they only award the top eight, or the top 10. Yeah, top 10 in academics, according to the test, and they measure that by the number of questions that they answer correctly, as well as how quickly they finish. So you've got time pressure on top of your ability to answer correctly. So it's a lot of pressure. Then for the Quiz Bowl team, they have to take an academic test, they only take the top eight out of all the teams that test. So we were up against 43 teams for the academic test, and we scored second on the academic test, and then we won the actual Quiz Bowl event itself during the oral rounds.
Wow.
Yeah.
Gee.
Amazing.
It is amazing. Congratulations not only to you and to Jason and to the students as well, but I'm sure there's a little bit of pride in the entire school.
Yes.
And their regular classroom teachers as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Job well done.
Yeah.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you.
That is great. Man, life. I'm glad they didn't have that when you and I.
I know, because I was just thinking, oh, not at all. No, not at all. And the, Jack Gray, right? Because when you called his name, I definitely heard "Jack Brain." Wow, the guy is smart, and his name is actually Brain.
Yes.
But, and my hat off to the both of you for hard work and dedication, because when you said 20,000 kids.
Yes.
My head inside exploded.
Yeah.
Because I cannot imagine the sound, you know.
Yes.
I don't like to be in an SUV with my two grandsons at the same time, so it's, you know, hats off to you guys.
Oh, thank you.
Job well done.
If you can imagine, the events are going on throughout the entire arena, and we're trying to manage the different teams as they're competing, so we have to split up, and he'll go with one group, and I'm with another group, and then we've got parents that are with us as well, helping to herd them where they need to go so that we can make the next event, and make sure that they've got pencils and calculators and all the supplies that they need for the events as well, so it's.
So I'm guessing the only major breakdowns were with parents and coaches, probably not the kids.
Well, we both had migraines the last day, but it was also the lights and coins.
We had Advil with us.
Yeah, we did take Advil.
Oh, my.
But yeah, it was phenomenal, and honestly, we couldn't do it without the whole Discovery family all working together, because people were flying in and out and traveling to and from their events, and it was just a very choreographed machine at that point.
And also, a great big congrats to the parents.
Yes.
Not only for what happened in Oklahoma, but also the preliminaries that went on here in Murfreesboro and at the school, and without the parental support for the students in the school, it never would have happened. So thank you, parents, very much.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, can I say something?
You sure can.
I was going to say to Lisa Trail, we've got to make sure that we get this good news out to our public, because I know Dr. Gilbert has been so excited about this, and she's kept all the board posted with emails and had us on alert and on the edge of our seats, but on social media, sometimes the school board members get attacked, you know, are called out because of certain things negative within our school district, and we have got, I'm just astounded, I'm like, how can anyone feel negatively toward our school district? We have so many great things going on, I just don't know that it gets out to the public. And I know you put it on our Murfreesboro City School Facebook and Twitter, but we've got to let our district know what a great job our schools are doing.
Absolutely.
And our district, and all of these parents who are supportive and made the trip, and maybe not everybody got to make the trip, I'm not sure, but we appreciate you investing in our district and our students.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. Consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items?
On your action item, your first action item is the surety bond for Gary Anderson.
Surety bonds are a state requirement that we have to do every year. It's a number that's established by the state, it's fixed on how much it's going to be, and it's just something we have to do every year.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the surety bond? So moved, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Settles, and a second, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, reports and information?
Yes, your first report is the annual agenda that is there. This, of course, is an outline of what typically happens. A lot of it depends on what information we get from the state or from other areas, but it is there for your information. The one thing I will note is the board's self-assessment in the spring of odd years, and Ms. Moore pointed this out, and we do need to get with TSBA and get that information so the board can do a self-assessment this year. Any questions about the agenda?
No, other than it's not in concrete, all of this can kind of be.
It has to be, yeah, it has to be flexible because of timelines that we can't control.
Do we have to have a motion to approve this? Be nice, all right, do I have a motion to approve the annual agenda as printed?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, and next is your, Gary, these are yours, the revenue and expenditure report.
Yes, board, the May expenditure report, we're at 91.7% of the year, this is the next to last one for the year. Our net income is $5,596,000. Last year at this time, we were at $4,385,000, so cash-wise, we're in good shape at this time. On our revenue side, our property tax collection is up $290,000 over last year, and our sales tax collections are up $519,000 over last year. So those are good numbers, and we've collected 90.4% of our total revenue. Part of this is we still have another growth payment which will come, typically it comes in July, but it's accounted back into June because it's for this fiscal year. So we will get another payment on that, so we should be in good shape on that part as far as revenues go. On the expenditure side, we're at 80.6% expenditures. Last year, we were at 81.3, so our expenditures are right in line with where they should be at this point of the year.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the financial report? Mr. Ballard?
So as we stand at the end of May, we are 5,000, or 5,500,000 to the good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, when we get to July 31, what do you, do you expect that to be?
Well, one thing about the month of May is the state does not give us any BEP payments in May. It comes in June, so we kind of go through a roller coaster ride. We're up in April, we drop in May, and then we go back up in June. So, because that's a big chunk of money that comes from the state. They skip a whole month on payment, and we get our growth monies as well.
So we should be in the plus side, finishing in the black.
Oh, yes, sir.
Easily.
Yes, sir. Remember, these are cash flows here, is what it shows, it just shows a cash position at this time.
Right. Okay, good, thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Other business?
Well, this doesn't have to do with that, but I did want to say again, congratulations to Gary for your appointment. I think that is very commendable.
Thank you.
I'm always excited when you talk about the savings that we get because of all of these energy efficient things that you implemented. I think that is highly commendable, and thank you. We are proud to know that you're a part of us, even though you're on another school board. We know that school board is not nearly as nice as we are and everything, but.
I agree.
But thank you.
He may have a little bit more repercussions from the public than another school board as well.
That's correct.
All right, any other business, Mr. Ballard?
Well, I just noticed that we approved the agenda, but did the partnership agreement with, did we move that off of the agenda?
No, it was with Head Start.
It was on the consent.
It was on the consent agenda.
It was on consent items.
It's something that we do every year. In fact, the state, a few years ago, really strongly encouraged partnership with Head Start. Fortunately, we already had that. So it basically is what it was last year, there were minimal changes in it, but it's basically what we've had for several years.
Okay, well, forgive me that I just let that go by, because I did have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, if we can go back.
You can certainly ask them.
Okay. In that agreement, first of all, has, we're going to be attending meetings as needed with Head Start management. Who is our liaison? Who's the point person for the city?
Our person, actually, we have a couple, but Cheryl Schmidt is going to be the person, and typically I'm dealing with them also. Sansray Batten is the person that I deal directly with, and Leslie McKenney is the person that is in our schools.
Okay, and then, how is it that, okay, we get reimbursed.
Right.
$1,000 per student. So where are we at the end of it? Is that profitable for us, or is that, do we run into the red running this program?
No, it's not, it's not going to hurt us. It's not going to hurt us in any way. Basically, we're, they're children that qualify, they are in our program, but they are children that perhaps they might have to serve if we didn't have this partnership, so it doesn't hurt us. We don't get enough money from the state, VPK funds, to fund our schools, our program, and so what we get from Head Start certainly helps that.
Okay, and this, and this is, I guess I was trying to determine as I went through it, you know, who drives this, I mean, who runs the program? Is it, does, is this fall under you as superintendent to run the Head Start program?
No, not the Head Start program, the voluntary pre-K program. And within our voluntary pre-K program, we have students that we serve who qualify for Head Start.
Okay, and we still have, for some reason, I also thought Head Start was no longer in existence.
No, it's very much in existence.
Okay.
They serve, some of the same children we serve, but they also serve different children, so they have a location where they serve children, and that's the case all across Tennessee. But they also, and there are some qualifications, and I can get those to you, they have to do, the qualifications have to do with the percent of poverty that the students have to meet that would qualify for Head Start.
And we provide the, all of the staffing?
We provide the staffing, but they also have people who work with us for example. For example, they have three social workers that work with us, and they actually have about six people that are located at Oakland Court that work with us. So they will do home visits, they meet with families, they help with health needs, they help with screenings. So we have, we have benefits that our children receive through that partnership.
Okay, my last question, and thank you for indulging me. The, is there any benefit, or is it even possible to consider to do that all in-house? I mean, are we committed to the Mid Cumberland, to the federal government?
The state actually, I don't know whether there's a requirement, but there certainly is, and I'll need to find out. But there is certainly the expectation that we will partner with Head Start in our communities. And that's, and that's the case across the state if you receive voluntary pre-K funds. That's just the expectation, and it comes from a few years ago with the idea of partnerships who, or entities that are serving the same children partnering together to strengthen the ability to serve those children.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much, and I know we've, yes, I know we've already approved it, and so I'm just catching up from, and I know we did this last year, but for some reason it...
I think it would be extremely difficult for us to get those funds if we didn't do that. In fact, there may, as I said, there may be a requirement, and I need to look, I just, yeah, if you'll, if you'll call me on that, I can have it ready for you at the board meeting.
Okay.
Well, I wanted to say too, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that, that Head Start partnership, what it essentially does is strengthen what we already have, and we don't have to pay as much. So it's kind of like a value-added service. I remember Head Start years and years ago was kind of a separate entity, you know, you had a Head Start Center here and Head Start Center there. But with them, working in conjunction with our Murfreesboro City Schools, you've got a one-stop shop. And like Dr. Gilbert was saying, they get a lot more value-added services that are provided through the Mid Cumberland group, such as the social work aspect of it and that type of thing. Because even Head Start does more than just, you know, it's more than just a pre-K type deal. They kind of service that whole family. Am I right, Dr. Gilbert?
That's right.
They kind of, they kind of encircle that entire family to prevent the continuation of poverty in that, in that neighborhood. So it's an excellent program.
Good. Ms. Barton?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Ralph for doing the report for us for last week. Of course, it's been my reading material for a while. But I do have just a few things about that that I wanted to ask. A lot of moving around, a lot of turnover, okay? Seventy-one new hires, a lot of administrative changes, coaching changes. We still don't have a curriculum in language arts, science, and now social studies. What kind of training are we doing this summer or before school so that we kind of get everybody on the same page?
Okay.
Because not a single school has less than ten changes of people coming in and leaving.
So a couple of things about that. First, a lot of those changes are per teacher request.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I understand that.
And the other thing is, I think that when you look, I think sometimes we can be alarmed at those changes, but when you look at the percentage that we have as far as turnover, it's right in line with other counties. So as far as teacher training, I attended today a fifth grade training, for example, where the teachers were there planning. And I think you'll find that across the district, that we have grade levels that are training. We just finished the learning extravaganza, and I've forgotten, Joe, how many?
No, we actually have, I've said...
We have another...
...this week.
Okay.
Two, well, two weeks of sessions in July.
So are they mandatory now?
No.
So then, how is it a viable training if we're not sure that everybody in the system is getting the same thing?
Well, we can't, we can't require teachers to come.
I understand that.
So then that, that becomes important for us as far as what we do those first few days.
Right.
And as far as the planning. As far as the curriculum, right now, we're holding on everything with the budget until we find out what we do with technology. And hopefully, we'll find out about that this week. But there has been a lot of training going on that is not required for teachers to attend, but if they choose to attend, if they do, same with planning. And we can't mandate that in the summer.
Then I guess my question would still be, how are we going to be sure that everybody is prepared? I mean, I remember being a new teacher, gosh, thirty, a long time ago. And when I started, I had, I had teacher manuals that I took home and studied, I had all kinds of stuff. What are we handing these seventy-one new teachers? Now, I know they're not all brand-new teachers, I get that. I saw the years of experience, but they're all brand-new in our system.
Right.
So what are we handing seventy new teachers to tell them, "This is how we do it, this is what we do"? I don't know. I've been concerned about the professional development part the whole time. I mean, this is not a secret.
Okay. I'll be happy to talk with you about that. I don't have a problem at all talking with you about that. I think Murfreesboro City is doing a good job preparing teachers as well as we can. I think that when you look at the number of days that we have during the year that we choose to take so that teachers can plan, when you look at the number of days at the beginning of the year, I think that certainly helps. I think that one thing that we have to talk about is what's happening to teachers when they come to us, whether they're prepared or not. I think that's a discussion here across the state as far as the teacher prep programs. But I think what we're giving teachers right now is we're giving them the scope and sequence. We have a math curriculum that's there, but there is no curriculum right now that is going to meet the state's standards. So what you're going to find teachers doing, even if we purchase textbooks, even if we purchase three textbooks, they're still going to have to look through that to see if they meet the state's standards. Fortunately, our coaches and most of our teachers that have been here have been trained to do that. That's not the case everywhere else.
But it's still, you know, I see what you're saying, but I did the same thing. There's never been a curriculum that fully met state standards, as far as I remember. But it was a good place to start, and we learned how to supplement. Again, I go back to that.
I'll be happy to listen to anyone who has ideas.
Yeah. Well, another thing with the, I assume our coaches are doing a lot of the training, right?
Right.
Are they being compensated for that?
Our coaches are not required to do training. Our coaches are choosing to do training if they choose to do, and I can't even tell you what the coaches are doing as far as the training. But again, if you have suggestions, I'll be happy to listen to them.
Okay. Thank you.
So if the coaches choose to participate in that in the summer, there's no compensation at all for them?
There hasn't, there hasn't been, and I don't know that there's ever been for teachers. There is, there's no way you can compensate teachers for the amount of time that they spend. I wish we could.
But I think the expectation has been for coaches, it's grown every summer more and more, the days they spend that are not in their contract.
I don't know that there's, well, and I would say that I, as far as the expectation, if the expectation is there, then the coaches are putting it on themselves. What I've asked them to do is work on the scope and sequence, but I have not asked them to meet in the summer, and I don't think anyone has. But I think what you'll find is the coaches are choosing to do that, and so are the teachers. And if it's otherwise, then I want to know. I would like, at some point, for this board to consider having a retreat in September. I think there have been a lot of questions about curriculum, there have been a lot of questions about budget that I think we probably need to go over. But I also would ask if the board has any questions about curriculum, or about budget, or about anything else. If you'll give me a call, I will certainly put you in touch with people that can give you the answers.
Okay. All right, so sometime in September, so be looking at your calendar, and we'll start. I'll get with you, we'll come up with a couple of dates maybe and see what...
I think getting schools started in then September might be a good time.
Okay, all right.
As soon as we can find out, the better, so I...
Sure.
Get off work, you know.
Okay. Yeah, so they're right. All right, anything else coming before the board, not Ms. Goff?
I wanted to ask about, I mean, probably not had time to address it, but we had talked about the policy with interrogations and searches.
Right.
Have we had a chance to meet with law enforcement or anything about that?
I think that's something that, go ahead.
No. I have not met with the Murfreesboro Police Department, but I have been doing research on my end on the law and regarding youth interrogations. It didn't come up again on this meeting, obviously, because we haven't had a chance to tweak it, and I didn't want to throw it off with the two readings that were necessary.